If I could call to order the meeting, study session of the Board of Commissioners for November 5th, 2019. I would like permission to add item, an item 6A for us to be able to discuss current legislation going on in the Senate and House that affects our road commission. Is everyone comfortable with that? By consensus? Okay. That's what we will do this morning. With that said, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bear? Commissioner Wallace? Commissioner Kennedy? Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Alwell? Chairman Shatwell?
Truly carried. Administrator Controller Overton, you up to bat?
Good morning. Well, the Event Center project is rolling along. We're at the project, we're at the point in the project of ordering the equipment for the kitchen. We brought it today as an action item because of the long lead time as of, as much as 12 weeks. The current date of occupancy for the project is mid-February. So again, that's why we brought it today. We're doing this in a not to exceed amount of $87,000,379. We're doing the not to exceed because we think we can work with this vendor to do some gently used or used equipment that we can source through them. So we hired JRA, a commercial kitchen design firm, a while back, and they basically put together the specs to develop a catering kitchen layout and identify the equipment that we needed necessary to operate the kitchen. We used that to receive three proposals, and we are recommending the lower, which is Great Lakes. Be happy to answer any questions? Or Jeff, do you want to add anything?
Commissioners, Tony?
Darius?
Looking through the doc, supporting documents that were provided, and you said you hired AR, ARA to assist with this kitchen design?
JRA, yes.
JRA, yeah. JRA had recommended several pieces of equipment that in the Great Lakes bid say, state that they are deleted. If we hired a consultant to tell us what we needed, why are we not providing everything that they said was needed?
So, so the purpose of the consultant was we needed to know where equipment might be positioned, particularly equipment where we were going to punch a hole in the roof or the envelope, things that we needed to, to install or infrastructure that need to be installed in advance, power, plumbing, those types of things. So we got the basic layout from JRA. At the end of the day, we've hired, you, you all approved, and we've hired Kosch as a catering equipment company, and they bring certain equipment to the table that's on this list that we won't have to buy. So we deleted those items from the proposals here, and, which is why Great Lakes has deleted their, or put, put zero in those pricing areas, because those are items that our catering company will bring to the table as a part of their services, and we won't have to buy them. Most of it is portable types of equipment that you'll see in there. And then there are a couple of items where we had duplicates, where JRA was making a certain level of assumption, not knowing our operation, and so they were suggesting multiples of certain pieces of equipment that we chose not to purchase either. We started out, the very first, with everything that JR had specked, had specked, we were at $136,000, and that wasn't an acceptable budget number, didn't fit within the, the number that we had set aside for this. So we've been working very hard over the last several months to try to get this pared down in a way that we can operate, but, but fit it within the budget.
That makes sense on, on those items, thank you. Further items, the, the JR, JRA specs list a, a cooler, well, the walk-in cooler is one item. Based on the size of the walk-in coolers, you can get different cooler coils, which is a separate item, and you can get different cooler, different sized cooler compressors, which is a separate bid item. The successful bidder only listed the walk-in cooler.
Right.
Made no mention of the coil or the compressor.
Right.
And I could not determine, because when I've specked, when I personally have a specked big refrigeration systems, you've got one spec that is the physical enclosure. You have a separate spec that's the compressor and the coil. I couldn't find from their information, is the compressor and coil included?
Not in this package. The compressor and coil are included in the Rockford construction contract, so the two will marry up. They've been communicating. JRA is actually a subcontractor of, this is kind of the family tree, is a subcontractor of Progressive A&amp;E, who is a subcontractor of Rockford. So they've all been communicating, and the cooler that was specked and is being provided here is just the cooler, the compressor and the coil are part of the Rockford contract or one of their subcontractors who were, who are doing that, the mechanical contractor. In this case, I believe it's Applegate here in town, who's providing that.
Okay. All right. The, I see that the JRA specked a mop sink, and that's not in the bid. Is that in Rockwood's contractors also?
Yes.
The exhaust, or the, the dishwasher with a booster heater is provided. They put out water that's too hot to go down the drain. It gets, the drains get dangerous to touch. So they include a drain water tempering kit, and that was not in the bid. Is that somehow listed with the dishwasher? I couldn't see that it was.
No, if it's, if it's a kit that's going into the actually plumbing system itself, then it would be included in the plumbing contractor's work. But I'll have to check on that, because I don't know that answer.
Okay. There, let's see, what was the other item? They had the, what item number was that? 508A? I can't find it right at the moment. The, the hood, the exhaust hood states that it does not include the fan.
Well, there, there isn't an exhaust or a hood as we describe it for a cooking oven, your typical hood. We don't have any cooking equipment. It's a catering kitchen, and so all we have are warming ovens, which don't require your standard exhaust hood. So there's not actually a, a grill hood, as you would, you would think of it, provided in this contract.
Item, item 805A is exhaust fan that's supposed to be part of the dishwasher hood.
Yeah, yeah, different hood.
A different hood, okay.
Yeah.
Well, 50, numbers are small to read, 508 dishwasher hood is provided.
Yes.
The exhaust fan for the dishwasher hood is not in the bid.
Right, that's part of the, because that's a penetration to the roof that was, in fact, already installed by the mechanical contractor. It's already in.
Okay.
Anything that is penetrating the roof has been placed in the mechanical contractor's contract, so that it gets put in in advance, and we don't have to punch holes in after the fact that they went in during the actual original construction, trying to avoid as many potential leak points as possible in the roof.
Okay. Well, that clarifies to me what was included in the FFE package and what was included in the general bid package. So you're asking that this be approved by the full board at study session?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something we can do, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct. You've been doing stuff all year. Been approving items all year for all departments.
Okay, and the county, the county park board has not approved this yet. Their meeting is tomorrow?
Yeah, just the sequence, so this is contingent upon their approval. We have talked to them about it. We don't anticipate any issues, but if they were to vote it down, then anything we do here would be null and void, and we'd have to come back to you next month.
That's normal practice. When we've, meetings have been out of sequence. We've done the same thing with the airport. We did it with some large projects at the airport, where the Board of Commissioners met before the airport board meeting, and we voted based on contingent, and we do the same thing with Health Department and other agencies.
So effectively, Tony, effectively, the Parks Board would have met before committee, but because we're meeting today as a study session, we're able to get this going and get it moving so we can be open when our target date is, and we, can we say that yet in a public meeting?
Yeah, we can say.
February 28th for the Home Builders Association.
Yes.
That's our goal and date. Well, as both of us know, if you give contractors an extra 14 days, usually they take advantage of it, when I use the term usually.
Well, the one aspect that I, I'm not comfortable with is too many things come to the commission with a statement here, the timing, they talk about the timing. If you don't get board approval today.
Yep.
Then we're going to look like the ones that upheld, held up the project and made it late. We're not the ones making it late. I would like to see your department and others.
Yep.
Come to us in a more timely fashion. I don't, I'm not comfortable when you say, hey, today's the deadline. If you don't prove it today, the Event Center doesn't open on time.
Yep.
And it's kind of like the commission's fault. No. If these are 12-week lead items, this should have been here a month ago.
Yeah. Don't, don't disagree, but the nature of this project and the way it's funded and budget, I could have bought this equipment, quite frankly, brought it to you six months ago. But I might have brought it to you at a different price point. So my budgets, particularly as it relates to FF and E items, is a very fluid budget that, quite frankly, keeps shrinking, and so I have to keep adjusting and taking things out of the budget or out of the project to make it fit and keep it in budget, and so it wasn't prudent for us to bring it much sooner than this. I apologize for that, but it's just the nature of, of the beast here if we're going to, going to stay in budget. I don't want to spend money that I don't have to spend immediately or earlier in case I need it later. It's kind of the game I've been playing.
All right, and Great Lakes is acceptable to this contract, which provides certain pieces of equipment. They're, they're agreeable with your comment here that to keep costs low, you're still going to be looking for some gently used kitchen equipment?
Yes.
To replace the brand-new stuff, so?
Yeah. All three contractors we had, which are all reputable companies, we had conversations with, and they knew that it was our desire to wear appropriate, and that, that's key, not all equipment. Ice makers, without carrying on here, ice makers are an example. They're a problem when you buy them brand-new, so you generally don't want to buy a used one, because you just inherit even more problems. But there are areas here where we can buy, you know, the restaurant business has the highest failure rate of just about any retail business in the, in the country, and so there's an awful lot of relatively new equipment on the market at auction, and these folks all do that for their clients. It's just hard to do that in advance when you're doing, so you generally do a bid with new equipment, and then after you've selected and compared apples to apples, you go back and then begin sourcing that used equipment where available. Again, you can't predict when the auctions will happen and what'll be available at any given auction, but you give it your best try to, try to lower cost.
Okay, thank you. Darius?
Good morning.
Morning.
I just have just a couple of quick questions for you. Using the Great Lakes West equipment, does that come with a warranty at all?
Yeah, the equipment, buying new, the individual pieces of equipment would come with warranties from each of the individual manufacturers identified, and they each have different, different warranties, but most of them are in the five-year range.
Okay. And, I think I had just one more question. Have we used any of the equipment from Great Lakes West at all before in other projects?
No, this is our first kitchen project here in Jackson that I've been involved with. I have used them in previous jobs to.
So you're familiar with the company then?
So we, yeah, they're, they're, they're one of the, there aren't a whole lot of kitchen suppliers at this level doing commercial kitchens. They're one of the, I guess we'd call them the big boys in the, in the industry.
Okay, okay. Thank you, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Any other commissioners? Entertainer motion? I have a motion and a second. Any further questions to the motion?
Motion is, is funding and this.
That's correct. Further questions? Clarifications? Seven, zero. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations on the parks attendance. I see we were up in every category, camping as well as cascades as well as, I didn't see a golf course report. Do we have a golf course report yet, or are we still playing?
We're still playing, playing a little bit, yeah.
Even up in?
Snow today, but we're open.
Yeah. I would ask, I would ask you to put them in writing and give them to the administrator, and he can then share them with all commissioners? So we can go to the next item? Well, there's not a chance for response under Commissioner Comment. All you'll be doing is asking questions. Now, if you wanted to add an item to the end of the agenda for parks, we can do that I don't see why not. So we're going to add an item 6B. Everyone comfortable?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Not to prolong the hour and remind me of what Robert's Rule says, but if the agenda's already been approved and we've started a meeting, can we then add two? I don't, if members of us have been correct, I don't believe we can add to an already approved agenda.
That's correct, but I was hoping that we could all have a friendly amendment and allow that to occur. If not, then we shall stay with Robert's Rules and not amend anything, sir.
If, if you're fine with it, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm all set.
My offer is to everyone, it's not just to me. I'm asking, just as your meeting runner, I'm willing to do it.
I see.
Is everyone else comfortable? Okay, then I'll tell you what, Tony, we're sticking with the rules. With that, Mr. Overton, would you please give us some history of item 6A that involves the state, a court case?
Sure, sure.
And everything.
Let's see, what was it, five, six years ago, the state passed a law that allows for counties to assume responsibility and control of all the roads in the county, meaning basically to eliminate road commissioners. At the time, we had done some analysis work, we did a white paper, had numerous discussions with members of the community and the county commissioners, and at that time, the board voted to assume those responsibilities, and we have been operating the road department as a, or road commission as a road department ever since. At that time, the, we were with McCrisip, which is an insurance pool that is made up of road commissions across the state. As such, the people on the Board of Directors for McCrisip are road commissioners, and they, this, some of this, well, I'll say where I speculate. I speculate that they were concerned that they may, if, if all the counties take over road commissions, there wouldn't be any road commissions, so to speak, so maybe that puts McCrisip in jeopardy. I'm not sure. Our expectation was at the time to stay with McCrisip as an insurer for our road department. That's something they specialize in, they have done it for years, they have a lot of expertise in it, we didn't see a real problem. Unfortunately, they did, and they asked us, they didn't ask us, they told us we could no longer be a part of the insurance pool. And, you know, we argued with them at the time, because we're like, well, wait a minute, the law says that the county commissioners are the road commission, we, other than who, to whom they report, it's not that big a deal from our perspective, if you will. They disagreed and ultimately kicked us out of their insurance pool. We were fortunate enough to be able to, we were picked up by MMRMA, which at the time had no insurance pool or had no road commissions at all, so they made a new category and made some changes in their own law, bylaws to accept us. And it's been a good relationship ever since. We've had them, we've been doing business with them for a long time, and they do bulk of the counties in the state. The, the, the problem with what McCrisip did beyond the fact that, you know, we thought they were being unreasonable, was that they said, we're keeping all your money. And what I mean by that is, when you pay insurance, when you pay insurance, you know, dues into a pool like that, you know, you're an owner in the insurance pool as a member, like a credit union to some degree. And as the year goes on, they pay their claims, you know, so whatever claims and expenses they have. Well, at the end of the year, they look at their profit and loss and say, hey, we have this much in the bank, we believe our outstanding potential claims is X, so we can issue a dividend or issue a refund, if you will, to all the membership based on their participation and, you know, of monies. Ours, at the time, the average we were running was, you know, 100 to $150,000 a year, in fact, closer to the 150 mark, I believe. And, so, and they hold money for a 10-year cycle, so what they're saying is, it might be three years from now, you might get a lawsuit from something that happened today, three years from now, and it might take another, who knows how many years to work through the courts and all that sort of thing, so that's why they hold 10 years' worth of money. And so we're looking at them and saying, hey, you have 10 years' worth of our money from our perspective. We're talking well over a million dollars, we're confident of that, and we would like our money back. Now, in all honesty, reasonably, I would think that they could have said, okay, every year for the next 10 years, when we make our distribution, we will include you in there because we have your monies withheld for that purpose. But that's not what they did. They just said, sorry, you're out of luck, we're not, are we kicking you out? We're keeping all the equity, all the excess dues, or I should say, membership fees, premiums that you have paid into this insurance pool. Of course, we were not alone. Ingham County and Calhoun County too had assumed responsibility for the road commission, and they treated them the same. So the three of us formed up and hired an attorney, Bonitowski, Peter Cole, to file suit against them to try to get our money back. And it's progressed, it's been, well, it's been five years now, or darn close, and, you know, it's been to, it went to the appeals court, it was like a three-person appeals court, and we won. The appeals court said, yeah, you know, we agree with the, with the counties on this. And then McCrisip filed with Supreme Court, and Supreme Court, I guess, the way I understand, looked at it and said, ah, three-person panel, let's send it back to the appeals court, but the full appeals court. So it went back to the full appeals court, and I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, we've already been there, but that's okay. And we went back, our attorneys, and explained again to the full appeals court, and we prevailed once again. They have said, no, you treated these people improperly, you have their money, you should give them their money back. And I'm paraphrasing a lot here, I'm not an attorney, the legalese. And at any rate, McCrisip has continued to fight all along, so then what they did was they reappealed, they appealed it to the Supreme Court again, and that's where it is today. So they filed with the Supreme Court, then our attorney filed an answer to their appeal with the Supreme Court, and then they have an opportunity to reply to our answer to the Supreme Court. And Bonnie, I talked to her yesterday, they, their reply was basically, well, my words, very lame, it was like, well, wait a minute, Bonnie, you used too many words and too many pages, this is not acceptable. And she just, she told me, she said, I just shook my head, and I'm like, what are they doing with this? Doesn't make sense. Why would anybody apply, reply like that? One, it's not, they're not correct. And then when I explained to her that I had received a call yesterday from Deena, from MAC, one of our MAC representatives, and she said, informed me of this little House, Senate bill, no, excuse me, House substitute for Senate Bill 322. And that is, and you guys have all seen it, when they, somebody adds something, a little change to a, to a existing piece of legislation, try to sneak it through, is how I explain it. And she says, you know, you want to take a look at this, Mike, because I think it's going to have an impact. So I, she sent it to me, I looked at it, page seven, at the bottom, it says, and I'll just read the significant part here, "The transfer authorized under this subdivision does not include any contributions, payments, or equity to which the dissolved Board of County Road Commissioners may otherwise be entitled by virtue of participation in a group self-insurance pool." That one sentence they added to this piece of legislation that if approved would undermine, I believe, undermine our lawsuit and all other counties who would, going forward, who would try to assume responsibility for their road commission. In fact, to my way of looking at it, it's a poison pill. They're basically saying, yes, the law says that county commissioners can, can assume responsibility for the road commission, but if you do, the insurance pool is going to keep all your money. And there's plenty of counties that, that have probably millions of dollars in equity in those insurance pools. And so I asked Deena, I said, well, where's this coming from? Who put this in here? Sure enough, it's the attorney who represents McCrisip, who happens to live in the district of the legislator who has snuck this sentence in. And I'm like, okay, this, this, you know, that's why I'm like, we got to call out the troops, everybody, we need to be talking to, you know, our legislators, and, and we have. I've, I've, I've both talked myself personally with Sarah and Julie, and she is, you know, they're on it. I know Julie, the Ways and Means Committee are going to be, I believe, taking this up Wednesday, tomorrow. Julie is in front of that committee tomorrow too, and she's already. Julie is in front of that committee tomorrow too and she's already spoke with the author of this, a piece of language, this substitute, as well as the Ways and Means Chair, to try to make sure he's aware of there's problems with this legislation and that we are going to, you know, obviously try to bring it to a stop, if you will. But, questions?
Just, what's the piece, the proposed piece of legislation? Hasn't been voted on, has it?
No, it's in, it's in committee.
Well, hold on.
Go ahead.
It's been voted on in the Senate. It's not been voted on in the House because it has to go to the reconciliation committee. So, this could be done without true review on the representative's floor.
Okay.
The reconciliation committee could approve it without follow-through.
And what's the proposed bill's number?
You sent it to everyone, didn't you, Mike?
I did.
Okay.
I can, I can send it to you right now, actually. I can text it to you too, for that matter.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioners? Commissioner Alvo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, you've done a good job laying everything out and I appreciate the heads-up to everybody by email last night. I was terribly upset when I got your email because, as you know, I've been pushing, where are we at with this? Where's our money at? And I can't believe it's dragged out this long, in all honesty. And from the start, I think it was, this issue was used as a hammer by the insurance pool to try and keep counties from taking over road departments or road commissions. And then beyond that, well, they initially used it as a hammer by saying you couldn't have insurance through them. Okay, so what? We got our own. Then they used the bigger hammer to walk away from a million dollars. We're not going to do that. And it's just utterly ridiculous, in my opinion, that there would be legislation that would codify this. It's just a tool to try and keep county boards that are acting responsibly from taking over their road departments. Who could reasonably vote to walk away from a million dollars in revenue? And I can't believe this will stand and hopefully the people in Lansing that are up there speaking on our behalf see this and are able to prevail on it. I'm not quite clear on the sequence of it, if it's before Ways and Means. I'm guessing that it has to go back to the House floor before it's voted on, I would think, before it would even go over to the reconciliation committee. At least, I hope that's where it's at. But we've got good representation in Lansing and I'm hopeful that they'll be able to stop this.
Thank you, Mike. We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. The public has arrived. Mr. Duke, nice to have you here.
I'm public today.
That's right. Seeing none, commissioner comments. Okay. Any other commissioners? Mr. Kennedy?
Just want to make you guys all aware that the six annual grocery giveaway that I've been doing with the Michigan Center Eagles is going to be this month, Sunday, the 24th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We don't require any ID. There's no income requirement. So, if you have any people in your districts that are in need, encourage them to come. I know transportation is an issue and we're working on getting people that could possibly deliver, but right now, we don't have that in place. But October 20, or excuse me, November 24th, Sunday, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Michigan Center Eagles Clubhouse, we'll be giving out groceries to families and individuals in need, along with some cleaning and personal hygiene products. Sunday, November 24th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., Michigan Center Eagles Clubhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. Today's Tuesday, November 5th. Go vote.
Any other commissioner comments? Any other commissioner comments?